All right, welcome everybody to our April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four budget workshop number three. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have a motion to call the business meeting to order?
So moved.
So moved. Shanna, second?
Second.
Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman, workshop number three.
Workshop number three, take it away. Well, welcome everybody to the final workshop. Glad everybody survived the eclipse yesterday and can make it here. Our agenda for today, we have some budget updates, some state aid updates, gonna go over the tax rate projections, and then talk about some of our other revenue categories is our agenda for today. But first up, you know, the work doesn't stop when it comes to budgeting. We did not slow down after workshop number two, we're constantly looking at stuff. So we actually have a new total, it's up slightly, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars over what we concluded workshop number two with. So that's really moving from a little over a three percent to a three point two-one percent. What changed? So, you know, constantly looking at course offerings, it's something that the team is always looking at reviewing what the secondary is doing, it's constant data that's coming in, so looking at that as continually through the process in the course requests, so we have some overages there that we're looking at adding to be able to run some more classes compared to where we were the three weeks prior with workshop number two. So a little bit better information there, and then some RTI staffing changes at the middle school. So that added some dollars there too. BOSI services as well, so, you know, some of our BOSI services are actually not through Monroe one, they're passed through through Monroe two, and it's weird to say, like Monroe two, it's just around the corner, but we have to go through a whole different process to purchase services from Monroe two, but we also buy services from Genesee Valley, OCM, that's the Anadaga, all the way as far away as the Albany area BOSIs as well. So that pricing for certain things comes in a little bit later and delayed. So we saw some of those instructional services we purchased, we drilled down a little bit more, and we saw those increase slightly more than what we had projected, so that is adding to the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar increase. And then lastly, support staff. A district of this size, we're constantly with aides and assistants, there's a lot of movement with over almost three hundred support staff positions, so we do see a lot of movement, and a lot of it's tied to programming. So as we've looked at special education programming and other instructional programming, what is the level of support there that we need? So there are some support staff increases as well as part of that three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So this is all instructional adds, nothing to the other sides of the budget, no changes in benefits or on the operational side. These are all just instructional changes that were added from workshop two to now that I wanted to update everybody on. So the overall is, the three, the instructional portions is really what's driving the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more than the instructional budget last time, or the overall budget number. So if you look at workshop two, we're three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars more for this workshop than we were at the end of workshop two because of these reasons.
Three point two-one is the year-to-year budget difference.
Increase, correct.
Right, so we still haven't changed the cap. The cap hasn't changed, and that's still gonna be a three-three, which is the same there, right?
This is all budget.
It's just the year-to-year budget number that changed.
Budget increase, yep. Next up is, we'll review state aid in a little bit greater detail. We're gonna hit foundation aid first. Everybody loves to talk about foundation aid. So just a little background for everybody, a little refresher, what is foundation aid? Why the big deal? We go all the way back to ninety-three with the Supreme, with a New York State Supreme Court case about inadequate funding, resolved in two thousand and seven with this foundation aid plan, that's where we get the foundation aid formula from, and really took seventeen categories of aid and consolidated it in one. It's all benchmarked on districts meeting key assessment standards and what those districts spent, so that is a huge portion of the formula, established an average to be funded locally and by the state. So there is, in the formula, there is saying, hey Webster, this is how much we think you can afford by all your metrics, this is your portion, and then here's the state portion. There is always a yearly update to modernize the formula, you've heard that a lot. It is unrestricted, unlike some of the other things we'll talk about tonight, it's totally unrestricted, there is no purpose to it besides general aid. It doesn't, it's not tied to anything specific. And then just to take a look at our foundation aid historical look back all the way to the beginning, you could see the blue is what the formula base is. Orange is what the district actually received, and gray is what it should have been. So you can see all those previous years, the formula base is based on the original, what, the formulaic system they came up with. So you see twenty-three, twenty-four was the first year that all three are equal, so that last year was really the first year it was equal, that the formula was allowed to go as you would say. So that's just a little historical perspective on...
We said it lasted one year.
Just to give you some background on why foundation aid's important. So what now? So like twenty-four, twenty-five was really gonna be, you know, the first year, like, hey, we, November's coming, this is what we're getting, we get, there's no guessing. It is our largest portion of state aid, it makes up roughly sixty-two percent of all of our state aid. And so what's that impact on Webster? As a reminder, you know, as we're waiting for the state budget, the CPI was changed from four point one to two point four in the formula. That's impact from the governor's change, so original loss, six twenty-nine, seven sixty-seven. There are three data release points on the formula throughout the year. So November's the first one that we are super excited about, saying like, hey, we'll know in November what our foundation aid is, this is gonna be awesome, it's gonna help with planning and prediction. That's that initial loss from the governor's run. February, we get another data point release, so that loss actually moves up because we would've gotten more foundation aid. And then the next release is mid-May, that would, what we would be our normal basis for the following year's budget to expect of what the foundation aid would be. So that's kind of like the synopsis, so, you know, what now, where are we going, what's happening with the foundation aid?
Brian, actually, why don't you do one, I wanna go back to the CPI change from four point one to two point four, really quick, I know you know this top of your head, so why did it, what's the, what's the new formula to get to two point four? Four point one would've been CPI from the year previous, which is what the formula calls for.
Right, so the formula calls for a year-over-year change, and what the change to the formula and under the governor's budget proposal was to kind of eliminate the year-over-year, stretch it out, take out a couple of the high years, and then utilize a median number to get to the two point four. In essence, a way of, you know, reducing the state's commitment overall to the foundation aid formula by changing that CPI.
I think that'll be important as we potentially go forward, because whether they do end up using that or not this year, maybe gives us a window into what they're thinking for future years.
So basically it eliminates the outliers, so that there's not that...
It's part of the CPI average over time, over the ten-year window that they changed it to.
So they might need that larger amount of money, it's still not paid.
Like a year of big inflation?
Yeah, year-over-year is what, yeah.
So it's always revolving, okay.
Words in their favor.
Yes, correct. Our prices go up, CPI is supposed to help, but now it doesn't equate with what we're seeing on costs because of CPI, because they've stretched their commitment out. Yep. And then I just thought I'd give everybody a reference, this is all of Monroe County, November and February projections, and then what the governor's proposal was, so you can see, I've sorted them by the far column, it's the variance from projection, from least to greatest, so you could see, we actually have the second-largest impact in the county. So just a little information for everybody to see how it's spread out amongst all the districts for Monroe County, and how we compare with that CPI impact to Webster. Can you see? You know, and you can see the nuances in the formula, because, you know, you see Greece being the largest, they are the largest district by a couple thousand, but, you know, Rush Henrietta's up there, but they are equal in enrollment to, real close to Fairport. So, but Fairport has got the lowest. So you could see how the formula has a lot of nuances into it that can change with a lot of district-specific points that go into the formula. So just thought that would be interesting to point out to everybody.
But it shows a significant impact it's gonna have across Monroe County.
So talk about those late state budget impacts, what's gonna happen? Let's get the crystal ball up, couple thoughts on that. Very confident that the expense-based aids are very predictable. Neither the governor or any of the legislature branches has put forward any changes whatsoever to any of the formulas, so I think we're very confident, safe to predict the formulas will be accurate for what we're gonna present this evening. In foundation aid, will we be made whole? Little bit more to come on that as we work our way through the information tonight. So I think those are the two main late state budget impacts. You know, there'll probably be some educational spillover in some other areas, but as far as the financial is concerned, those are the two areas kind of always circling and focus on. So let's roll through those expense-based aids for you, just so we can touch on those and what those are. Just remember, they're always based on either enrollment and/or expenditure amounts or both, so we spend it, we get it back in aid the next year, or they take enrollment counts from this year and utilize those to drive how much aid we're getting the following year. So, a couple things there. Transportation aid, looking at that, really, governor's estimate always assumes we spend every dollar that we report to SED in September, we still have ten months of school to go to see how much we're actually gonna spend on transportation, and so our estimate is, yep, we're probably gonna spend a little bit more than we did last year, but we are actually losing two percent on our aid rate, so they're gonna wash out. We're spending more, historically you'd get more aid because you spent more, but our aid ratio is going down by about two percent, like two point one, so that lower aid ratio, we're not driving as much aid, we're gonna stay flat year-over-year. I could say that with great confidence, that no changes, we budgeted seven million dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're probably gonna get the same seven million dollars twenty-four, twenty-five. And then legislature, there's gonna be no changes, so. And you're gonna see a common theme, BOSIs is almost identical to transportation aid, very similar formula, very similar economics behind the formula. So transportation went down two percent, so did our BOSI's aid ratio, went down two percent. You know, we do a very early projection, before we really even get our first BOSI's bill for the year, they're already asking us, what do you think you're gonna spend for the entire year? We try to give them a projection, but, you know, so when the governor runs their numbers, it's very inaccurate because it's a very early number. So very similar, we are gonna spend more for BOSI services this year, but that aid ratio going down two percent does the same thing, nets us out, we'll get right about twenty-four, twenty-five, six million dollars in BOSI's aid again next year. So no major changes there. Next up is building aid, that's probably the most significant change. It's not really based on enrollment, it's all based on paperwork and final cost reports, so what we're expensing. So the governor's estimate is, comes out in, based on October data, so what forms we have into the system by October fifteenth, but the forms are actually due to facilities planning on what we're spending and what we're projecting, and crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on all the cost reports that we do for capital projects, aren't due until December thirty-first. So the governor says we're getting five point four million dollars when it comes out, looks like a huge decrease in state aid, but it's not accurate because they don't have those December filings. We know, I submitted them, I signed off on them, they're good to go, they're there, certified mail, perfect, we're gonna get that for twenty-four, twenty-five, so our estimate is based on all those cost reports. So I've, we're gonna get more money because we've done that due diligence on that, so hu, that's a big discrepancy though, and you could see from what the governor proposed we're getting for building aid versus what we actually are gonna get next year, and it all has to do with the timing of the paperwork, so wanted to point that out as well.
Yeah, you knew I had a question by the look on my face, didn't I?
And I think I might even have an answer, I don't know, maybe I'll, well, I'll have an answer.
Wow.
So are you telling me that you will get the bigger amount because you did the paperwork?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify, yep.
I had the same question, that's fine, when I talked to Brian about this, and it's, we get the number from the state, the five point four in November, we file the paperwork in December.
And then, yeah.
And that's why they don't know that we're about to file the paperwork, and that's when Brian sent it all in.
And the perfect example of this, that middle number, if we had an on-time budget, the legislature would have that paperwork in their runs, and you would see the number be very close to what we're predicting and our estimate is, because they would have all that December paperwork when they pull their data to do their legislative runs.
Thank you.
See? Okay? Sure.
Maybe we've already gone over this, but, so you spend it, and they, it's not that they reimburse you, it's just that whatever you spend, then the next year they give you the same amount.
Correct, yeah, we don't get a reimbursement for state aid, it's, the expenditures drive how much aid we get.
So that one works out. As opposed to the other ones, when they decide, oh well, sorry, this is how much you're gonna get this year?
Yeah, the only one they've ever really done that with is foundation aid.
Right, okay.
That they've manipulated it. These formulas are kind of tough to manipulate because they are so, we report what we spend in transportation or what we spend with BOSIs is very specific, like BOSI's one gets, it's like six hundred lines of specific expenditures that we report to BOSIs, and they break every single one down, and each one gets its own aid ratio really, and it's really overtly complicated, the state makes it that way, which is, actually works in our favor because it's overly complicated them, for them to manipulate it and try to play around with it, so.
So the premise is that you will spend exactly the same as you spend, you will spend in the future what you've spent in the past?
No, it could, it fluctuates from year to year, what we spend with BOSIs or, you know, transportation, a perfect example is, you know, some years we spend a lot more in fuel because of the price of diesel, so our fuel, what we report to the state for fuel could be a million dollars. Some years it could be as low as two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the state gives us aid on the million or the two fifty, so there is some variance, it's all based on what we're actually reporting when we close the books every year.
So what if, if we spend more one year, and then we get more the next year, and we don't spend that much?
Then our aid comes back down. So if we spend a lot, we'll get more aid.
But what happens that year, do you keep that money?
Yep, it's a one-year delay.
Oh, okay.
So we spend a lot this year, so we're gonna get more aid next year. Now that next year, where we're getting more aid, we spend less, the following year we're gonna get less aid.
But you have money to cover it because you kept it from the year before.
We just keep, that's, we keep it all in the cycle.
Yeah. Just trying to figure it out.
The excess cost aids, you might remember from our challenging student calculation.
Yeah, that's right.
So the governor's estimate is really based on early student enrollment data, and constantly sending enrollment data to the state. So looking at our, trying to base our final projected enrollment based on who's enrolled right now, in BOSIs and private placements, we're close, this one's pretty accurate to what the governor said, but slightly less, but actually the one point eight-five is, you'll see later when we look at all the numbers together, is more than what we were getting this year. So we're projecting, we're actually gonna get some more in actuality for next year based on our BOSI's placements, this year and private placements as well. Then the last category is our excess cost aids, or not excess cost aids, excuse me, instructional materials aids, those are all based on student enrollment, and I'll run through the formulas real quick. This is textbook, this is library, this is software, this is hardware, of what we're going to receive, so fairly even. Textbook, we get fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents per student, library is six twenty-five per student, hardware, so very, is strange, we get twenty-four, twenty, but then that's multiplied by the BOSI's aid ratio of sixty-four, then times enrollment, so it gets reduced a little bit, and then software, we get fourteen ninety-eight per student. These have been pretty locked in for many years now.
Where does that point six-four come from?
It's our BOSI's aid ratio.
It's just arbitrary.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a good reason of why that specific instructional...
What causes that number?
Instructional materials aid gets reduced. That aid ratio is, is a lot to do with our property wealth that drives it, so that's where that comes from. Used to be point six-six, now it's down to point six-four, so.
Brian, what are library instructional materials, what constitutes that?
Books, library books, periodicals, you know, anything you can think that a librarian would order and put in the library. There's a, it's a fairly generous range of materials that could be qualified for library materials that count as the six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Do these, do these get increased at any time, or...
I've never seen them increased.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah.
Right, so I can see there's costs that go up.
There have been, yeah.
Some may, may go down, but it's mostly the other way.
There have been individual proposals over the year to say, you know, from certain legislature that have put forward, hey, let's change, you know, library to ten dollars a kid, but they've really never gained much traction.
Just buy less books?
Right, less books, right. I can imagine with textbooks, I, I have college students, right, those things keep, they just keep getting more expensive, so I can imagine for, you know, high school students, they're getting more expensive in terms of public, public sheen costs, so to keep a number so steady is probably not helpful.
And is software considered like subscriptions?
Uh, it's actual, it's, it's instructional software, so any of those programs used specifically for instructional-based learning can count as the software. The subscriptions to textbooks can count as textbooks, like an online version, or a digital, the old CDs that would come with the textbook.
But most of them are all...
Which were cutting-edge back in the day.
They come with the book and, and the software.
Yeah.
CD-ROM.
That'd be a good test, see, give a, give a CD-ROM to a student, what are you doing with this?
You'd be like, what is this? It's a sun catcher.
So, by the numbers, just showing you, we don't have a legislative proposal, that's an empty slot, but I don't think it's really necessary. So I got this year's twenty-three, twenty-four final budget state aid of what we've gone with for this year, then compared to twenty-four, twenty-five. So just wanna point out, you know, four things, I always subtract out UPK, it's a grant, so I just always like showing what they're saying we're getting, but it's really not state aid, so it always comes out. So the foundation aid that you see, that number up there, you know, will match what the governor says, it doesn't have the extra eight hundred thousand dollars in it. This is the number from the governor's proposal, so I just wanted to point that out to you right now as well. They match, it's not what we should really be getting right now, so we've left that number in there, that's the worst-case scenario, if you can imagine. And then the other things to point out, you can see we're getting, projecting an extra hundred thousand dollars over last year for both the high cost and the private excess cost aids. We actually have a few more students in the private excess cost compared to what the governor's proposal is, so I think that's gonna go up compared to what we had this year in those costs, so just point that out. You see the big change, which, for the building aid, more than what the governor said, but still less than what we had last year, because we had some debt coming off, so we are losing some building aid because of that debt coming off. And then overall, state aid is up because of that foundation aid increase in spite of that huge building aid comparison coming down, so just shy of two million dollar increase in state aid for the district next year.
Why is the library, software library text, if it's based on enrollment going down?
Because it's based on all district enrollment, so kids everywhere, private parochial, some outside the district that are enrolled in different schools, but their address tracks back to here, you know, so there's a, it encompasses a lot more than just who's in the K-12 buildings. Good question. All right, next up is our tax levy limit, the second-largest portion of revenue, so there's no update really for the tax cap, I just, I've linked it, it's on our website, links right to here, there's the formula, no changes from what we talked about in February. Just wanted to point that out as we work our way through some of the potential tax rates that we're looking at, some early tax rates. And so just as a reminder, there's three parts to the tax rate formula, so the levy is one-third of it, that's what we control as the district, the state controls the equalization rates, and the local assessors control the assessments. So I also have linked for everybody to show where we have all of this tax information that we do as a district, we have a landing page website, so this is all last year's, but you could, goes over the terminology for everybody, talks a little bit about the tax cap, and then any programs, anything we do, our tax warrant when it comes to August, all that information we put here as well. So we don't put the projected out here because that would just confuse the whole situation because the projected could change a lot. So I just wanted to point those out, that we do have that information out there for everybody. So, the fun part, our three parts. So we have our levy, it's not exactly at the cap because every year in June we get re-leveys, and we average about a hundred thousand dollars in what we call re-leveys. For whatever reason, property was in, an estate change or got mixed up, it's part of the process, so those taxes have to be re-leveed. So when we go and re-levy them, we have to subtract that total out from our total tax warrant. So we average about a hundred thousand dollars less, so a three-point-three tax cap becomes a three-point-two-nine when we actually do our warrant in August, and I'll show you that when we get the exact numbers in August when we do our tax warrant. So that's the first part of the formula that I'm plugging numbers into. Here's the fun part, so we have some very early equalization rate changes that are out there online through the New York State Property and Real Tax website. So Webster, in parentheses, is currently fifty-eight, it's going to fifty-two, so a six percent drop. Penfield is at ninety-four, going to eighty-seven. Ontario from eighty-four to seventy-six, and Walworth from eighty-two to seventy-four. These can still change all the way up to August like fifteenth, I've seen them change as late as that, so there's still time for the state to change it, but it's out there right now on that website with some preliminary, so I used them to plug them into the formula. And then the third part is what are the assessments for all four towns going to do? So Webster, Penfield, Ontario, and Walworth. Webster, I use the ten-year average, that one point zero-six, that's pretty accurate, that's what we've been around for Webster in the last ten years. Penfield, Walworth, and Ontario have all undergone assessment, reviews, so they have some outlying years where they've gone up tremendously in the last ten years. So they have some outlying years where they've gone up tremendously in the last ten years. So it's, when you look at what the ten-year average looks like for those three towns, skews the data. So I went out a little farther and went twenty-five years and used the median um, because there, there have been some wild fluctuations. To get to something that's a little bit more reasonable of a two-point-seven-four, a one-point-five-three, and a one-point-nine-three. So those are the three parts, um, of the formula, and what does it get us? First of all, I'll put this slide up till the day I die. This is just a projection, hundred percent guarantee, this will change by August. So rates for next year. Who's the big winner? The town of Penfield side of the Webster Central School District again. It's all based on the size comparison and assessed values between Webster and Penfield. Um, when Webster drops six percent, everybody on the Penfield side of town, doesn't matter, your taxes are going down. Now what happens when Webster reavails, that snaps the complete other way. So Webster goes to, back to a hundred percent, Penfield still hangs out there, Webster drops, Penfield goes up. So they work in like the symbiosis together, um, every year when that happens. So, um, could you say the Penfield side is a little bit subsidized by the Webster equalization? Yes, you can. Uh, that tax rate I'm projecting will be by far the lowest in Monroe County um, for any, any district right now when you look at the data. Um, the, if you, you know, living, attending Webster Central School and living in the town of Penfield, um, you've got the lowest tax rate in the county.
You got a question yet, because I know one time that was one of the lowest.
Yep, we officially, we're officially lower, so. Um, so Ontario and Walworth too, um, when those equalization rates fluctuate based on the sizes of those towns, um, those also have a, an increase and a, at a larger impact. So this one, uh, the projection is for, uh, next year, so anywhere from a decrease to a two-point-six-one percent.
So.
So what does that mean to you?
You turn it off.
Great. What does that mean to me? I mean, I'm looking at those numbers and honestly, I'm like, so?
He doesn't want to see.
I'm sorry.
So I, I, it's tough to answer that because everybody's property is unique. Um, that's why we're, we're speaking in generality. So, you know, Carol, I know you live on the Webster side. So in the pure fundamental, whatever your house is assessed at, multiply it by twenty-eight-point-four-oh-five-oh-seven-oh, divide it by a thousand, subtract if you still have your star credit on your bill, or you gotta wait till September thirtieth to get the check in the mail. That's your new tax bill for next year. So what, the simplest way to say it is, I'm projecting you might go up two-point-six-one percent, um, when it comes-
From year to year.
And from year to year in August. But there's so many variables within that, um, that can change, um, person to person, house to house. Did you throw a swimming pool in your house that they know about? That's gonna, regardless of what we do, your assessment's going up because you just added value to your house. So there's a lot of that nuance too, as we work through it.
She didn't put a swimming pool in.
No.
We've got a neighborhood one.
Pickleball court?
Just make that clear.
No work has been done at Carol's house, nothing.
Just helping her, I'm just making-
I know, I know, no way.
So what if I finished my basement?
Well, I hope you would have gotten, I hope you would have gotten the permits for the pool.
Right.
But what I'm saying, I never pay attention to taxes. If they go up, you, my, my father would say death in taxes, just don't think about it. But what does that mean to us? Like what, what is going to happen with all that? I know it sounds, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to put it into Carol's head.
I don't think I have a good answer for it, like what's going to happen, because it's going to change. I think the overarching thing is drop, Webster dropping to fifty-two percent is the state's way of saying, you need to do a reassessment. And that's in essence what they're saying to all, all four towns. I mean, Penfield just did one two years ago, and they're already projected to go down thirteen percent to eighty-seven. Same thing with Ontario and Walworth.
Okay, now, I get it now, thank you.
It's more of the assessors, the assessors and towns and the states kind of duking it out over us, um, trying to equalize everybody.
Okay. So when the, when the equalization rate goes down, does that mean that the state believes that the assess, assessments are lower than they should be?
Yeah, so that's where Webster is forty-eight percent under the market value.
But also for Penfield, they believe they're too low.
Penfield is thirteen percent under the market rate.
And so they think we should be collecting more.
More taxes.
Right. So more local share, less state shares.
No, there's, uh, no, it's, it's more about how the parcels are divvied up amongst the towns inside of Webster. Uh, we're actually, we're, we're easy because we're only four towns and two counties. Um, you know, if you have six, seven, um, eight towns within your district, it's, in essence, what this equalization rate's trying to do is say, all right, I live in Ontario, you live in Penfield, you live in Webster, that's three different assessors that look at properties three different ways.
Okay.
So the state's going to say, we're going to do this equalization so that a, you're, you know, it works out. Your house and your house and my house in three different towns all come out to be paying the same in taxes in the end, because maybe your twenty, twenty thousand dollar house, a forty thousand dollar house, a hundred thousand dollar house, all have different tax rates. So your bill at the end is all the same because of that equalization rate.
And a lot of that has to do with when the assessment happened. Right, the most recent, like you might, your house might be assessed at one value now, but when did that get assessed? And that's the whole purpose of doing a, eventually doing a reavail, I think.
Thank you. Last year, I didn't even know how to ask that question. So I, this is, now I get it, thank you.
I think that's normal.
I'm sure, so I was wondering the same thing.
That's great, no, absolutely.
So then, um, good questions on that. Our other, so we've just covered like ninety-two percent of all revenues that the district takes in. So the other eight percent is pretty simple to go through. And what are they? So sales tax, um, projected to remain stable. Pilots, those are our payments in lieu of taxes. Those are the, um, Imagine Monroe, um, specialized deals where we receive, uh, just a yearly payment for that property for sales tax instead of, not sales tax, for regular tax versus them being on the tax rolls. Those are going to be a wash, same as last year, um, moving forward. Our fund balance, maintaining the same level of appropriated fund balance we have for years to help reduce the tax levy. Uh, reserves, no, uh, need for reserves, um, for next year's budget. Interest, uh, you know, interest rates have increased, uh, I've talked about those a lot. Uh, but there's a lot of volatility from quarter to quarter. Uh, we could see them come back down during the middle of the year, so kind of want to be caught short. That's something we're going to continue to monitor to see if we need to adjust for the future, um, budget revenue calculations. And then miscellaneous costs for facilities usage, continuing ad, uh, any other sources of revenue, rentals, things like that, um, are projected to remain stable. So our final revenue numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, you could see the, uh, sales tax staying at eight million. We're projecting to, uh, get from there. The state aid numbers that we've gone over, our rental of property, our interest, the pilots, and then our miscellaneous revenues, not a lot of changes, that appropriated fund balance, and then, uh, the property tax levy, um, as well, gets to two-ten-three-oh-nine-zero-zero-nine um, when we look at those eight percent of revenues, uh, that get added into the formula. And then I promised, uh, this before we, uh, march on a little bit here. Um, we had a hold-in-place for workshop two, uh, but, uh, for what the budget comparisons are countywide, uh, but didn't have a lot of good data yet. Uh, was been able to collect some of that, some of it still hasn't been approved by other districts, so that's why I'm using letters besides us. Um, so the average is about a four percent budget increase year to year for everybody. Uh, countywide, you know, some obviously being above that, some being below that. So you see, we're, um, below that, we're fifth lowest increase of the, all the county districts. So I just wanted to make sure, circled back to that, um, and, uh, share that information. So next, the budget has to be a balanced formula. So we have our revenues that we presented, and then our budget went up to this new number. So we either have a surplus or a deficit, let me go back to that, that was premature to slide over. So we have a deficit of six-ninety-seven-oh-six-two with this budget. Um, you're probably thinking, oh, Brian, you're not seeming too worried about that or have a panic looked on your face. So let's talk through that a little bit. So, you know, what do you notice? Give you a hint, slide eight, sorry, the internet's not working for your computer, so you can't go back to slide eight. I could do that real quick for you. But it's very similar number to what we're owed for foundation aid. Um, that deficit to foundation aid. So, getting our foundation aid back will eliminate the deficit. What if we don't? You know, we have a couple of weeks there. Um, we'll sharpen our pencil, come back on April sixteenth with a balanced, balanced budget. Maybe we'll do some belt tightening, look at our revenue forecasting again, see if we could squeeze a little something extra out of one of the projections, maybe, uh, just tighten things up. Um, less conservative budgeting practices perhaps. Um, but, why am I so confident? Because last week, I spent a lot of time following every Albany reporter that follows the governor around, um, going nuts on Twitter, all the Albany, uh, press corps. And this is why I am fairly confident, uh, because the governor actually admitted it, um, in one of her press briefings on the road, that her school aid calculation is off the table. And that the legislature triumphs on the education. So we expect the formula to be whole.
Yeah, and she's come out and said that same thing to, uh, to Niskus, or her office has anyways, has hinted at this, to Niskus, we know. I'm assuming NISBA as well, we haven't really gotten anything from NISBA, but Niskus put something out, uh, to, basically to what Brian was saying, which is, again, okay, I'll take, I'm most likely going to take it back, but be prepared that there will be something that will change in the formula for next year. So more or less putting us on notice. That's what we got from our representatives at Niskus. So, so we're hopeful, we'll see what happens.
Read the tea leaves, not necessarily put in like a district like Webster on notice, but the districts that were losing money, that you, you have some time to now react to it versus what you were expected and anticipating versus what was actually proposed.
So you're saying that eight-hundred-eight thousand may come back?
With almost a hundred percent confidence, I'm going to say we will get that money.
So we would have a hundred thousand?
A little something over, correct.
Left.
But, that's, actually was one of my points, but you led right into it with a great question. Um, we still have our May output. So if the governor agrees, let the formula run, there could be some changes.
To something else.
So it might not be eight, it could come down to like seven, so it could be a perfect match. What I would do with that small amount over is just kind of keep it in reserve. Like not put it in reserves, but like, we know going into next year that they can change the formula a little bit, or we know there's always enrollment changes. We know once we do everything and submit it, that like, okay, here's the number, but here's what you're really getting because enrollment changed. So it gives us a little wiggle room to play with the flexibility in case that does happen. You know, if it was like, wow, an extra million dollars, that, yeah, we could have conversations of what we could do, but it's, you know, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
So we just leave, that's, that's like within that zone of, you might not actually get this because by the time you submit the enrollment numbers that really drive the formula, your, your numbers could fluctuate.
So Brian, so next year, it's definitely predicting that there's going to be probably a shortfall next year in foundation aid?
Not for us. I don't, I think honestly, it was their way of saying, I, I know I was cutting money from three-hundred-and-thirty-six districts, um, and I did it with like a one-month's notice, and you can't really adjust to it. I'm giving you a year to adjust to it now.
Mm-hmm.
So those districts will probably have to start prepping for it right now.
And so again, kind of, if we think it's going to be the districts that are, that have declined over the last ten years, so.
If they're going to use newer enrollment figure and their numbers have gone down, their formula's going to-
It aligns with what I heard the governor say when she came to, uh, Monroe Community College there in February to award the Village of Webster the four-point-five million dollars. Part of that speech that she gave was, we are going to be looking at ways of not paying for, uh, unfilled seats in the district. So if you put two and two together, that's really what she's looking at, is that she wants to say, again, those districts that have lost students enrollment-wise, of not continuing that part of the formula, which I think is exactly what Brian's saying.
That coincides with that whole conversation about, um, consolidation.
Right, the regionalization.
Yes, yes.
It was also her way of, I'll, I'll use the word threatening, that our formula wasn't necessarily the best formula either. Like, most districts might work out, but if you get what you want, some districts still won't get what they want. It was also her way of trying to say, well, I, my way works just as well as yours, but not necessarily.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And so Brian, when you have a revenue, you know, with the revenue gap like that, you have some choices, right? So you, I mean, you either take money out of the budget, or you either go up to your tax cap, right? Because we don't want to go, I know it's a, you can go over with a vote, but, I mean, those are really your two choices, right? And you said we're not quite at the tax cap.
So yeah, we'll, come August, we'll actually be a hundred thousand dollars under it when you talk about, because those re-levis always get subtracted out. So even if we're like a dollar less, it kind, we're still, we'll always be under the tax cap. Because if we go to the cap, minus three levis, we're under it. Um, that's the mathematically way I report it to the controller. So what, what do we do? We, you know, we conservatively budget, there's wiggle room every single year to do things. So in a year like, say we weren't getting this, I wasn't confident, say I was like at twenty-five percent, we're not getting this back. What I do is take some of that conservativeness out, and then Mrs. Lann, when she comes and asks for something, you know, the, the answer is no, because we lost seven-hundred thousand dollars. Only one person I still, I'll still say yes to.
So Erin, you just got to have Brian ask, is all it is. You heard that, right? Just ask Brian, Brian, like, right, you're all set.
Well, to me, it's not to just pick out Mrs. Lann, HR's not getting anything either.
Good, good, good job, there you go. I know, that's really good.
So there are, there are choices, there are some really cool things that we would want to do, but there are things that we must do, and we have to just balance those things.
Yep.
Did they say anything about that, you know, I think it's called the hold harmless, where they're guaranteeing, or was it the last meeting?
I think everybody will get one more year of that, is what the tea leaves are saying, everybody will. What you were anticipating, the hold harmless, three percent, will go for this year, but here's the first salvo to say, next year, you got a year to plan for not getting it.
Is this the only, um, funding formula that she's, um, wanting to change? Are they thinking about changing other?
Of, of all the state aid funding formulas, this is the only one that was changed.
Well, it's the most unattached, so like, it's the one basically just to say, just here's a bunch of money, do what your district needs to do with it. You're tracking it, but-
It's very hard to manipulate the other-
Building aid and those.
Yeah, it's very hard to manipulate those formulas. Because if you start, the one thing they'll never touch, and they know this, is like building aid. Like if you start messing with that formula, because we all have to be backed out by Wall Street when we sell our bonds.
Mm-hmm.
And if they manipulate the building aid formula, which everybody attaches building aid to what our bonds are, those are like a one-for-one, we always match them up. If you start not backing our debt, and that'll cause ripple and shockwave effects through the market, and that, that would be the most catastrophic thing financially to, to districts in New York State.
I think back to like special education isn't about enrollment numbers, but they're using really outdated data, am I?
In the foundation aid formula, there are some out, very outdated data points, yes.
Foundation aid.
Yeah, she said that too.
So we may, we, if, if they do redo the formula, do you think that we would come out winning as a school district, or?
I will do my best to get on whatever statewide committee that is, to help that happen.
Man's job.
That's good.
So just the upcoming dates, we got budget adoption one week from now, well, May first, we got some budget materials that'll be published and going out, May seventh is the hearing, May twenty-first is the vote. Uh, and then just wanted to point out- And then, just wanted to point out, we've done a nice job. All of our workshops, recorded landing page for the district budget. All the presentations are linked here, everything we've done with you guys through the workshops, through any board meetings, any legal requirements that we're required to disclose. Everything is all one-stop shopping right here on our district budget webpage. So, just wanted to point that out as well for everybody. Any other questions?
Excellent. I appreciate that you have everything on the website, so anybody that wants to look things up can find it very easily.
Yeah, I actually had some people ask, so that was exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So just before we close though, I do think certainly the last three workshops have been fantastic, and I know, I just, again, thank Brian for the time and effort he puts into these workshops and making sure that we all understand them. He's also going to be doing some of these presentations in the community this year as well. We've got a couple of those set up through Town, Parks and Rec, which is fantastic, and a couple other places too. So, Bri, thank you very much, I appreciate all the work you do for this. I think if I, if I had to summarize to, two numbers that you always, that we will get. The year to year, and so that number is, who wants to say it? Percentage, it's a year to year percentage.
3.21.
3.21, very good, nice job, great job team. And then the other one is usually that people will ask, the tax cap levy, right Bri?
Yes.
And that is 3.3, right? Could we say 3.29?
I, I wouldn't because that's an estimate. I'm assuming we're going to get about $100,000 of re-leveys like we always do. Some years it could be 50, some years it could be 110.
So stay with 3.3.
Stay with the 3.3.
So 3.21, year to year, and 3.3. Awesome, thanks.
No, go ahead.
No, so our budget went up 3.21.
Correct.
So our tax levy is going to go up 3.3%.
And that is, takes us right to the gap.
Yep.
Okay, so if anybody asks you in the public, those are our, those are pieces that I think people, we all get, that I constantly get to. All right?
You've got to convert.
You know, I was just like this last year. But I feel, I've been paying attention, so thank you.
This is a lot to take on to the process, it is.
The state doesn't make it easy.
But you do, Brian.
It's just because you took my six hour financial, I was part of your six, six hour financial training as a new board member.
All right, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Carol, so we go.
Second, Maria, all in favor?
Aye, thank you.